Jennifer, can you hear us okay? Can everybody hear us okay?
This is Kathy, I can hear you.
Okay.
Okay, and we're going to go ahead and call this to order. It is 8:45, Monday, May the 11th, 2020. And this is a call meeting of Montic County Commissioners' Court for a public hearing regarding the adoption of Montic County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Is there anyone out there in virtual land that would like to make any comments? Or do you have any questions for the court regarding this mitigation plan?
During nub, we will wait for time. I will say that the plan has been reviewable on the website. So if there's anyone that hasn't had a chance to look at it, if you want to try to glance at it real quick, it's quite lengthy. It's well over 300 pages. But I'm told that if you've got anything that you'd like to ask about it, if we hear it real quick, it's available on the website.
Is anybody on the court having anything to say about it? I'll be waiting.
Mr. Plaid, it's finished.
For me too. This could quite be a challenge to review all this stuff. And there's going to be a, well, I might not say that. There's a real good chance that there'll be opportunities to amend it as it will belong to include the kind of a pandemic piece into it. But right now, that's not part of the grant contract. So we have to raise that as we go along with it. Nobody ever anticipated anything like this we're working on.
Did we not hear also that this expires in five years and has to be done again?
It will. And actually, we'll start. I'll have to be work put forward to get it going the year before because it expires on that date. That person has to have to go out and start the renewal process on it. A lot of it's part of the county. This particular mitigation, they review theirs through this process, this way.
They already had one in place.
They already had one in place. Later on, I did one five years ago. And built a new gymnasium. Captured here in that same house and did it off of financing through the, how they're done. They saved a lot of money on the building itself, construction of the building, but it cost them a lot of money to get it done. So they still ended up saving money overall. But it's quite expensive to do one of these, especially if you're a big seller. And they end up, I think that's done, I remember correctly, about 75% of what they said done in construction costs, which is, but you've got to build it to the specifications that people is out. It makes it a little bit more expensive to get it done again with the, for instance, a garage.
They're putting 75% of the bill, that's worth jumping through the door.
Yep. Especially if it's a guy from the nonprofit, a million and a half. And the numbers out, I'm just telling you the numbers out, I don't know what it costs to build it, I don't know. What they, the total number of what, the size of it is a very high percentage.
Well, that should usually go up, they don't have any, so I think it's, I think that's why I put the number out there, I think it's just saying, I'm not certain.
Anybody view two and a half?
It's one more just now. It looks like you've got employees, Kelly McNabb, and then there's Phoebe, and that's it.
Anybody have anything that you want to say, maybe any questions regarding the mitigation plan?
Got a couple more that I think they're there, so you've got a couple of things on there.
Okay, one last time. Does anybody have anything online that would like to say or ask any questions regarding the Montic County Hazard Mitigation Plan? Has no, somebody raised their hand in virtual land? Need a motion to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan and the resolution be forwarded to HCO and NPD.
Make the motion for that, just to adopt the Montic County Hazard Mitigation Plan and resolution, give, you have the authority to sign it needs to.
Same. Have a motion from Commissioner Langford to the second Commissioner Murphy to adopt the Montic County Hazard Mitigation Plan and the associated resolution to be forwarded to, through the proper channels and for everyone to sign. Any questions from the court? All in favor of the right hand, all vote in for it. Thank you. That will conclude the public hearing. We will adjourn that and we will open. It is 9:00 a.m., Monday, May the 11th, 2020. And we will call to order the regular meeting of Montic County Commissioners' Court. You would all stand for impeachment, you would all stand for flagrant.
Father, we thank you very much for the opportunity that we have to serve our community through these trying times. Father, the plan that we just passed is going to be a big advantage to the county in the future. We appreciate the opportunities that we've had to develop that plan, to work with the entities to get this done, Father, through the virus that we're experiencing in our county. Father, we just pray for each of the families that have been directly affected with illnesses in it, but also through the economic impact that it's had on, on family life as well, Father. We just pray that you be with each one of us. Pray that we have good decision-making, discernment in the decisions that we make, Father. We thank you for your grace and for your mercy as you can stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I see. To be seated. Next on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone that's watching the online version? And I will make mention that this Commissioners' Court is being provided public access and needs to participate for a video conference night. It's available on the website. Is there anyone out there that would like to have any public comment time? Give everybody a couple of extra seconds to figure out what we need to do to unmute to let it snow. Okay. Seeing none, then we move on to item number four, the consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda that you would like to bring up for discussion?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion, Commissioner Murphy, second Commissioner Langford, to approve the consent agenda. All in favor of that hand? All vote in for it. Item number five is a mitigation plan update. We've actually got quite a bit to discuss with that this morning, just some changes that have been made. And we'll start with stats that they just gives us. Tested for our county is 101 totally that have been tested that reside in Montic County. Of that, we had five, excuse me, nine positive tests, one fatality, that leaves eight that recovered, but we have no active cases right now. There's been a lot of confusion over how this, this has been reported. And I'm one of them that's been confused with it. We, it's not so much confusion as it is just a lack of timely information. Like I said, there's 101 tests in Montic County residents, but only 48 of them have been tested in the county. So the majority of those, the 53, have been tested outside the county. Now, that could come from a number of reasons. It could be that a place of employment has tested all their employees or allowing first responders or critical healthcare workers and whatever be tested outside the county. It could be that someone is maybe symptomatic and their primary care or the facility that they choose to go to is outside the county. And maybe where they, they do most of their medical procedures is, is outside the county and they go there for that. The confirmed cases, the only way we can list a confirmed case in our county is when VHS has that report from the testing agency and then they give that report back to our local health authority, which is Dr. McKegge, who's been here in the court and he's with us. The last two cases that we got this past week, Wednesday and Thursday, by the time we got them, the quarantine time had already expired. So we don't get to list those on our stats until we actually get them from the local health authority. By the time they're tested, and they were all tested out of county, or both of these were tested out of county, by the time they were tested, by the time the test came back, the deposit case, the debt facility got it to DHS, DHS got it to Dr. McKegge, and he got it to us to report on the stats, the time it expired. Some of these tests are taken eight days to even get the results back. So if, through the course of the examination and the investigation, whether, a lot of these times are expired before they even get the test back, whether it's positive, negative, or whatever, that's why when they do a test, it is presumptive that they are experiencing symptoms, they have to That's why when they do a test, it's presumptive that they are experiencing symptoms, they have to be quarantined at that time. But we don't know about it until we get a confirmed test. Now, I got an email this morning from DHS that says they are going to put the presumptive cases, as they go out for tests, when they're tested and they go to being approved, are going to start including those in the total. So we might start getting them a little faster. Now, this past week, I was on the phone with DHS more than I was anybody else combined, trying to figure out how we can get this stuff a little bit faster so we can get our first responders notified of what they need to be looking for. I've talked to all three of the entities with mayors or city managers of other entities within the county, municipal, within the county. And they assure me that they are addressing every call that they make as of this positive case, regardless of whether it's an injury or whatever. They're just, their protocols are running where everybody is presumptive. That way, nobody has an exposure problem that they wouldn't have otherwise. And that's, I think, is reasonable and sound judgment to do. They may use a few more masks and gloves and stuff that they normally wouldn't have, but I think that that's absolutely the way that they do things with it. Because we don't know how this is going. We don't have the information. A lot of people think that we're not given information, that it's not out there, but we can't give information we don't have. You know, and we can't tell somebody that we have a confirmed case until we actually have it confirmed through our local medical department, health department. So with that, does anybody on the court have any questions or comments? Does anybody in, on the video link have anything they want to ask about that? Okay. And I kind of went out of order. That was the public nineteen update. Mitigation update was already done in the public hearing, so we'll move on to item number seven. Discuss, consider line item budget adjustment for $3,300 for trend micro antivirus licenses and take necessary action. I think Auditorary Service for him, she briefed me on this last week when we put it on the agenda. Could you brief me on it as well?
Whenever Jessica submitted her budget last year, she had a server and this license all in the request, and it lumped into one number, basically. Well, whenever we took care of the server before the budget started, I took that lumped number out, and this license was included in that. This is for the whole county, and I have suggested that we take it out of the interest line item. It was just an oversight on my part. We took care of that server, and so I took the server, because I just labeled that dollar as a server.
I didn't know it until I went to pay the bill and then noticed, well, huh.
Yes. Yeah, I think we're good with the numbers. We've already approved doing it. We just need to move the money around to place the bill on.
Motion to approve the budget adjustment of $3,300 for the trend micro antivirus license.
Have a second question. I have a motion, Commissioner Langford, to approve the $3,300 budget adjustment for trend micro antivirus licensing and Second Commissioner Murphy. More questions?
Do you want to order the site? Do you want to make a call or not? Or just make them? It is to my department, I'm sure.
Anything else? All in favor of the right hand, all voted for. Item number eight. Discuss and consider replat of block number one through block number six. Block one being all of lots number two through six, block 49 R and part of block 49, top of the lake, rolling oaks estate, and take necessary action. Mr. Mayfield, is this...
That's mine. Yeah, Laura's got all that, everything in order. I think you got it.
Got the plat right here that we'll have to sign. What's the gentleman's name?
Don't ask him. It's a...
He's online, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Bruce, isn't it?
Yeah.
He's here.
Is there anything that you would like to say to the court or any questions that you have?
I don't have any questions. I'd just like to state that, you know, these were half acre lots that sat out there for years. If y'all are familiar with the area, the never sold, and I just see that there's a need for some larger tracts. That's the reason for the replat. Other than that, you know, the restrictions are going to be essentially the same that they were for Twisted Oaks. I'm just going to call it Rolling Oaks, just so people won't be associating it with half acre lots anymore. But other than that, if y'all have any questions to me, feel free to give me a co... I mean, to ask me.
I don't think I have any questions from this person. I think we'll be able to get this, get this done. If I have a motion to approve the replat, I'll make the motion to approve the replat. Second, I have a motion for Commissioner Mayfield and Second Commissioner Darden to approve replats. Are any more questions? Anything else from this person?
I don't guess so. I guess my only question, I talked to Laura this morning, you know, do I need, as far as the restrictions, do I go ahead and, and record this first and then go back with the restrictions with the volume and page on the restrictions or what?
I think he's asking about the restrictions and they'll do that through their office or something. He'll be filing them.
Is there restrictions attached to that?
Apparently, well, apparently they're on the case.
No, there's not right now, but I thought that I had to file it first. That way I've got a volume and page with the restrictions on the restrictions.
He said, "No, got that." If he's going to put, if he's going to put those in there, we're probably going to need to table it until he gets restrictions.
He was saying he thought he had to have a volume and page before he could do the restrictions.
No.
Okay.
They'll be a part of the plat, so we'll have to table that until the next time. But that too. We hadn't taken a vote on it, so we've got a motion and a second, so we can able to action on it till, till the next meeting. Get those, get those in with this and then we'll have to...
So I have to get the restrictions in with that plat then?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I'll, I'll get all those typed up and then submit it in. So when is the, when is the next meeting that I can do this?
The next meeting will be on the 26th. If you haven't done it, then it'll be second Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Well, I'll talk about June. If we don't make that with the 26th.
June, it'll be June, June the 8th.
Uh, well, I could do it the 26th. I mean, I could... Before I... Well, I guess my question to y'all is, I could have those restrictions. I mean, essentially, they're the same as what Twisted Oaks is, but, but I just need to put Rolling Oaks on there, so...
Why don't you just get with Commissioner Mayfield and get, let him review the restrictions on it, and y'all get together and decide when you want to put it back on the agenda.
Okay.
Or you put it back on the agenda, and Commissioner Mayfield can take care of that.
Okay. All right, I'll do that. Yeah, I'll go for the 26th because I can have those, you know, by the end of the week, and that's where I can have the 26th meeting if possible.
Good.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you. So we need to do that through the form of the motion to table that? Because we have, we had a motion on it.
Are you just going to try and send a motion to table it?
Yes. And then the motion to table it until the next... Till it's ready to, to put back on the agenda again. Clear the motion, same second? Okay, all in favor of the right hand, all voted for. Thank you. We'll move on to item number nine. Item number nine is discuss, consider permission to enter into a finance contract and resolution between government and capital corporation in Montecity County. Park precinct three, which is to John Deere 670G motor graders and take necessary action.
Judge, that's mine, and I'm about to, in the middle of the summer, I'll be out of the leases. We've been leasing for the last six years. And they changed the, the, the thing that's on the motion dramatically, so we're going to buy two. And the motion, I'll make a motion that we... Enter into a financial contract resolution between government capital and Montecity County, allowing you to sign that. And the amount to finance was $460,000, and that's what we put in $864 down. And I don't, I'm just doing this so I can get them on the river. This is because, I think I have about three months to get paid for shoes.
Second. I have a motion for Commissioner Murphy, Second Commissioner Mayfield, to enter into a finance contract resolution between government capital, Montecity County, for the purchase of two John Deere 670G motor graders.
It has been, please look over the contract nearly second.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor of the right hand, all voted for. Thank you. Item number 10, discuss and consider county transportation infrastructure fund grant, CTIF, and take necessary action. Commissioner Langford, I believe you put this on. You've been doing a lot of research on it.
I just put it on here, Judge, just to kind of give the court or anybody else enough date. We have all got our information into Debbie, and she'll have that sometime this week. She'll have it all ready to turn in, but probably won't send it to them. Today is the 11th. We'll probably send it to them. Deadline is the 27th. Anybody that wants to make a change or anything, I do think on yours, Roy, she needs, she needs where your start and stopping on each road. They ask for, on your road, what you're working on, your start and stopping point that you can get with her and send that thing.
Points and dates.
No, the points. You've got your dates on that thing, but it, say, for instance, you start at 677 and go tally roads like I do, man. It's just a certain area is what they're asking for there. We'll try to send this thing in on about the 20th first. That way, if they have any questions, I do, I think the only thing I need to gather up is road and road and red reports. Do you keep those separately there? I just need, I just need a copy. I'll swing by there and get a copy of everybody's and give it to Linda, I mean, to Debbie and Julie Redd to send all that to them. Get the, get the application filled out. Unless there's something on there that I'm not seeing, this application is pretty simple. And of course, sending it in a little ahead of time, we will know if we've got a problem or anything. But other than that, Judge, that's, that's all I've got on it.
Okay. You may have any questions?
I think, Bob, didn't they say they were allowing about 10, 10 days or more for them to find mistakes and us to correct them?
Well, I think so on that, but the 27th is the cutoff in where our Commissioners' Court meeting is also... I don't like waiting until the last day to get into them's reason. She's going to send it in a little early, but she will. She'll look over, or, uh, text out, we'll look over the application too and make sure we don't have a mistake. The main thing is, we've got their information, our information to them in plenty of time.
That's a good plan, you know. Well, thank Commissioner Langford for taking this on and doing it, and having your time, sending you to get all this together.
Well, of course, Commissioners are the ones that, you know, had foots of roads on there, but I know how beneficial this thing is to the county because it pretty well saved our lives starting off with after this flood, and so...
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll get more than one. People were allowed like 361, I think.
That's the minimum. Okay. I don't think there's any action to take with that. Does anybody have any more questions or comments from that CTIF? And then we'll move on to item number 11. Discuss and consider precinct four line item budget, budget adjustment for gravel part-time, take necessary action.
That's just a simple budget adjustment. I need court's approval for $20,000 from my gravel to my part-time line item.
Second. I have a motion, Commissioner Langford, Second Commissioner Murphy, for a line, line, budget line item adjustment for gravel to part-time, $20,000 in precinct four. Any questions? All in favor of the right hand, all voted for. Thank you. Item number 12, executive session in compliance with the Texas Health and Meetings Act, Chapter 551, Government Code, Vernon's Texas Codes annotated. Deliberation regarding personnel matters and following the closed executive session, Commissioners' Court reconvened to open public session and take any such action as may be desirable or necessary as a result of the closed deliberations. Motion for executive session?
Motion.
Second. I have a motion, Commissioner Langford, Second Commissioner Darden, all in favor of the right hand, all voted for. We will be in executive session at 9:22. We'll be back shortly. We're going to leave the Zoom up. Everybody can remain right where you are, and we will go to the community room like we did the other day.
Okay, sorry about that. Is everybody still connected?
I'm connected. It's Cathy.
Okay, thank you. The, I guess this other laptop decided to do a Windows update. That was real nice of it. So let me switch y'all over to my laptop. Give me just a second, but there's still an executive session.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, like the desktops don't have microphones. The laptops do. So like if one of them wanted to join, they could join with their laptop. Is these, or their cell phone. It works good on the cell phones too.
Yes.
I bet he was on his desktop. Yeah.
Okay, a motion to come back into regular session?
Motion.
So you have a motion Commissioner Langford to second Commissioner Murphy to come back into regular session. I will say that Commissioner Darden had an emergency call and had to leave. And all in favor of right hand, all voted for him. We are back in session at nine fifty-three.
Motion to adjourn?
Have a motion to adjourn. No action to take by the way from the executive session.
Second.
Have a motion Commissioner Murphy second. Commissioner Langford on the right hand, all voted for. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Any signatures today?
Yes, we have signatures of the resolution. And I'll give Commissioner Darden back in. There's two copies in there.